Good evening and welcome to the Smyrna Town Council meeting. Tonight, we will move into our meeting agenda and I will call this meeting to order. I am going to ask Pastor Brian Sadler, Brian, are you with us? Oh, great. If, to do our prayer and we have somebody special and I have not asked him, so I hope I'm not putting him on the spot. Is it Brayden?
Brayden just walked in.
Brayden? Brayden, once the pastor's done doing the prayer, would you be willing to come up to do our pledge for us? Okay. When he's done, if you will just come up and we'll let you lead us in our pledge. So if everyone would stand with us for the pledge and the prayer, please.
Before I do, Tiffany asked me to present this certificate to you. Our local church, the Pentecostals of Smyrna, entered into a covenant of compassion that we would strive to be the best citizens of our town, to pray continually for our town and its leaders for protection and blessing, also that we would have compassion for our neighbors. We stand for morality and righteousness in the community. We covenant always to be available to serve our town in any capacity. Can we pray? Heavenly Father, thank you today for this opportunity to come together, God, to live in a country that we are free, God, not only to pray, but to meet, and God, that we have a government that is friendly towards our community, where we are so thankful to live in the gem of Tennessee, the town of Smyrna, some of the best people, God, we just thank you for the privilege of our leadership. Your word declares that leaders are lifted up by your authority. We know that the right people are here today, for you have put them, God bless them, give them wisdom, God, give them knowledge, God, help us to have unity in our community, and we pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you so much. Brayden, just come right up front.
Okay, uh, everyone, please remove, um, all hats and headwear, please, except for religious headgear and hats that are contained to your outfit.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance.
Brayden, will you go to the microphone right there for us? So Mark Atkins goes to church with Brayden and his family. And so tell us a little bit about why you're with us tonight.
Okay, so, um, I'm in the Boy Scouts, I'm a troop 374. Our meetings are hosted at Blackman United Methodist Church in the Blackman area and, um, there's, in the scouting program, there's merit badges that are, that you're required to get to rank up, and one of the merit badges that is, uh, that's required to get is communications. And that's one of the ones I'm working on right now. And requirement for, hold on, uh, five, is to work on, is to attend a public meeting. And Mark Atkins that goes to church with me at Life Point, um, hooked me up, and Mike Moss here, that also goes-
I can't do that all the time.
Mike Moss here-
Campaign promise.
Mike Moss here that goes to church with me, I was emailing back and forth with him. Um, and I just, I came from Boy Scout summer camp, um, and was able to attend this meeting.
Great. Well, we appreciate you being here and I can't imagine, being put on the spot at his age, he has done an excellent job, so we are glad that you were with us. So thank you for being with us. You've done a great job.
Thank you.
Is there another scout in the back of the room? Would you like to come forward? Come right up, and I think I know this scout pretty well. So tell us your name and why you're here.
My name is William Smith and I am here to help to try and complete my merit, one of my merit badges, it's citizenship in the community, and I have to come to one of these town meetings and write down a lot of notes to give to my counselor.
Great. Well, William, William knows my nephew Kenneth pretty well, they bowl together and-
So he has a hookup too.
He's got a hookup too. And he is an excellent bowler. And I just can't tell you how glad we are to have you all, to be a part of our town meetings. So we're so glad to have you, and if you have questions after the meeting, we will be happy to answer those. Okay? Thank you. If these two gentlemen are any indication of members we're gonna have in our community, I think we will be doing just fine in the town of Smyrna in upcoming years. So Ms. Diane, you're up for roll call.
Councilman Cole.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Morrell.
Here.
Councilwoman Peebles.
Here.
Councilman Sullivan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Here.
Mayor Reed.
Here. We'll move on to item three in our meeting agenda, which is approval or correction of the minutes of the June 12th and June 28th, 2018 meetings. Jeff, are these in order?
It's to form, ma'am.
Thank you. And any additions or corrections we need to make with the minutes?
Move to approve the minutes.
Have a motion, so a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, minutes pass. Correspondents and communications, Mr. Gill.
Uh, yeah. Last Thursday, we had a, there was a reception held for Ed Kohler. Ed is all of you know, or many of you know, retired after, I believe, 25 years with the city. Many of the staff were there to honor Ed, and we wish him the best of retirement. He was far too young, from my perspective, to retire, but he did it anyway, and good luck to Ed, he's a good man.
Agreed. I did tell him if he runs out of things to do, I could have a honeydew list a mile long for him. Ed can do just about anything. He is a great guy and he'll be missed. Anything else, Mr. Gill? Okay. I do have some correspondence from Lane Yoder, who is the executive director of the Motlow College Foundation, and she says, "Dear friend of Motlow, thanks to you, the second annual Smyrna BBQ and Blue Jeans event was a success. We netted nearly $30,000 for the Motlow College Foundation to go towards the building fund for Smyrna's third building, which means we are that much closer to reaching our goal. Thanks to you, more individuals and families in our community will have a brighter future because of your gift of education. Please know how grateful we are for your generosity." So, great things happening at the Motlow campus, and I think the event was a huge success. I know quite a few of you were able to attend. Tonight, under awards and recognitions, we have quite a few Art Crawl winners. We had four divisions, the adult, high school, middle school, and elementary school. And I know I'm kinda putting you guys on the spot as well, but we have photos of the piece that you did, and so I'm gonna ask each one to come up to the podium and describe your, tell us a little bit about your project, and then at the end, I'll call everybody up at once and we will give you your awards and your prizes. So I'm gonna start with the adult division, and Robin Clotta, are you with us?
She had work.
She had work? Okay. So, um, she had a mixed media painting, Crazy Houses, Crazy Hills, and so you can see her piece right here. And I'm assuming y'all are gonna accept on her behalf, her gift? You can, okay. When we get to that, I'll call you up. And Adriana Castro? Yes? Oh, come right up. Hi.
Hi.
So come up and tell us a little bit about your piece, and if I mispronounced your name, if you'll get right behind the microphone so we can get you on TV. Tell us a little bit about your piece.
Um, it's just something I did in my free time. I'm a, I'm an art major, art education major at MTSU right now, and so I hope to teach kids art one day, but this is just something I did on my free time.
Great. And it says that it's a charcoal drawing?
No. Acrylic, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. I'm sorry, yours is acrylic, you're right.
It's acrylic on canvas paper.
Well, it was a beautiful piece, and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
So the high school division is next, and Natalie Finch, Natalie?
Hi.
Come on up. So tell us a little bit about your piece.
Um, I, no, come here.
Scared to death. That's okay. That's the way Mark feels every time he goes on camera. Yes, he's very shy. So tell us a little bit, what's the name of your piece?
It's called-.
Fitness Beach?
No, it was-
Harbor Sunset?
Yes, I'm so sorry.
That's okay. That's okay.
She has so many.
So what made you decide to enter into the contest?
Um, I don't, it's just kinda been something that I've wanted to do for a while, because I worked with Leah on the mural on Front Street, and she told me that I should enter it, and I talked to her about it, and so she said that I should do it, and came up with that.
Well, we really appreciate all that you added to Front Street through the mural, so, and your piece here was very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you. You did good. Annabeth Creel? Tell us a little bit, yours was the charcoal piece, right?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Well, the winning piece was Brazil El Zaira, and it is actually one of 12 portraits in a series titled The Daughters of God. And it's just a piece that, um, well, each one has a woman from a different country. And so Brazil is one of my favorites, 'cause I got to represent the style in Brazil. So, I don't know, that's my piece.
They were beautiful. So you did a great job. Thank you. Middle school, Julian Elliott. Hi, Julian, how are you?
Good.
Good. Tell us a little bit about your piece.
Um, it was just something that I wanted to, 'cause we were on vacation, then we found out about it 24 hours prior to the event.
Wow. So you put it together pretty quick.
Yeah.
And it says it's an ink drawing? Yes. So how long have you been, um, doing art?
Uh, I actually started just earlier this year.
Really?
Like 24 hours ago, right?
You did a great job. Congratulations, Julian.
Thank you.
And our next one is the elementary school recipient, and it is Gabe Peebles Ross. Gabe, can you tell us a little bit about your piece? And I know you are so shy.
Well, it was just something I did in homeschool. Um, it's a silhouette of me.
And what's inside? What all does it say inside?
Just encouraging words and stuff that I wrote.
Very good. You did a great job. So at this time, I'm gonna ask each one of our winners to come up, and if one of you would come up for Robin, that'd be great, and I will give you, I'll get your awards passed out, and that way we can get you all on camera, so if you'll come right up front. And if you'll face that way, the camera can't get you. There you go. I'm gonna just stand there, or wait, that's good. Yes. Okay? And Robbins? There's Robbins. Adriana?
Yes.
Right? Yes. And Natalie Finch? There you go. Please. And Annabeth.
Yeah.
And Gabe. There you go, sir. Okay. Look at all these people wanting to take your picture, so let's kinda get close, so we can all get our attention. Okay. I want, got a few more. There we go. Okay?
Yes.
We all good? Thanks, you guys. Congratulations. Raquel, do you wanna talk a little bit about the Art Crawl and how it came to be and how the winners were chosen?
Okay. Um, this was the third annual Art Crawl that the town has had, and we have it on the second Saturday in the month of June. And it is a event for anyone who wants to enter, you can enter up to three different types of medium, and like this year, we expanded it to include the elementary category. And it's held at the Depot, and it's actually a walk-around type event, and so it was at the Depot, at the Smyrna Assembly Hall, and also at Carpe Artista, the 101 building at Front Street. And all of the citizens were the ones who chose the different winners. So everyone got to go around, and then they could pick out whichever one they wanted from each individual category.
Great. And it was a great turnout.
It was.
If you didn't get to attend this year, then we hope that you will next year. Let's move on to our consent agenda, and our consent agenda are items that are determined by the town manager to be routine matters and not necessary for discussion, but if there is an item that a council member would like to pull off and vote on or discuss individually, we can do that. I do like to read each one of the items on the consent agenda, so the public knows exactly what we're voting on. Item A is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with City Works PLL ELA relative to the permitting software for the Codes Department. Item B is approval and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal contract with Rollins Excavation Company LLC relative to stormwater, general construction, and concrete work. Item C is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal contract with Sessions Paving Company relative to the annual roadway patching. Item D is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a proposal from Gresham Smith &amp; Partners relative to additional engineering design services for the Sam Ridley Parkway corridor or roadway widening project. Item E is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a proposal from Gresham Smith &amp; Partners relative to the Potomac Place Extension Project. Item F is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Jones Brothers Contractors LLC relative to the annual asphalt paving. Item G is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Klein Sweeney Associates relative to the installation of roof over skylight at the Criminal Justice Center. Item H is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal contract with Century Link relative to the voice and internet services. Item I is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a lease agreement with Smith Turf and Irrigation relative to the golf course maintenance equipment. Item J is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an addendum to Capture Point Community Pass Software Agreement relative to the Parks and Recreation Department credit card processing. Item K is consideration of the declaration of surplus items. Item L is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with ACS Incorporated relative to delinquent court cost fines collections on behalf of the municipal court clerk. Item M is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Richards Manufacturing relative to large gas meter sets. Item N is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Savant Learning Systems, also known as Virtual Academy, relative to the police department training. And item O is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the amendment to joint operations agreement, Second Amendment for the Smyrna Rutherford County Airport Authority. Is there an item council would like to pull off and look at individually?
Mayor, I'd like to pull off D and E, not necessarily for great amounts of discussion or anything, but just because I think that they're items of importance and interest to the community, and I spoke with Mr. Rose about, speaking about them before the meeting, so.
Okay.
Do that, please, ma'am.
Then we will pull off item D and E to talk about individually. Is there anything else that council would like to pull off individually? Signa?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as written, except for items D and E.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of all items other than D and E on the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. Now we'll look at the individual items. We'll start with item D, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a proposal from Gresham Smith &amp; Partners relative to additional engineering design services for the Sam Ridley Parkway corridor roadway widening project. Tom?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. With this project, the Sam Ridley widening corridor project, what we, the mayor, myself, Mr. Gill, and Brian Hercules, all met with Gresham Smith &amp; Partners. We both met with the Metropolitan Planning Organizations, well as TDOT. What we're wanting to do is to extend the road widening project. Originally, it was only designed to be widened to three lanes in each direction from I-24 to about Wolverine, but after meeting with MPO and TDOT, we were able to get the tip page adjusted, and we're gonna be widening it to three lanes in each direction from I-24 all the way to Old Nashville Highway. Also, this does include curb and gutter on the outside and inside sections of it, so this is just additional funding for Gresham Smith &amp; Partners, who's already currently working on the project, to include those items and widen it from 24 to Old Nashville Highway.
Which, I think, when we were in the, at the retreat, this was one of the things that we wanted to make sure that happened, was that we were able to go three lane, all the way from Sam Ridley all the way to Old Nashville Highway, which did take some additional funding, but TDOT was willing to step up as well as the MPO.
Does it also improve the approaches from Old Nashville Highway also?
Uh, no, it does not go into the Old Nashville Highway area, but I did just receive approval on the CMAC grant, that's congestion mitigation air quality grant, that I applied for a little over, about a year ago, and they did award us a CMAC grant of about $4 million for turn lane improvements at Old Nashville Highway and Sam Ridley. So that project, along with the widening, and next we're talking about Potomac Place Extension, is going to, and what we're getting ready to start construction on here, when we go out to bid here, actually, we are out to bid, on the Stonecrest-Sam Ridley intersection project, that's gonna help traffic tremendously throughout that whole corridor in the next few years. Once we get through these construction projects, you'll see a big decrease in your amount of travel time along that section of the corridor.
Very good. What's the bid date on Stonecrest?
It's out to bid right now, the 25th of this month. We should be receiving bids back on that proposal, RFP bids back on that, and we'll go with our consultant, they review them, find out who the lowest qualified bidder is, and ultimately get TDOT approval on that, and get council approval, and we'll be able to get started on it.
So we may let that bid in August then, correct?
Uh-
Can it happen that minute?
Yeah, it could be August, September, probably more like September timeframe. It takes TDOT a few weeks to get through their internal review.
Very good.
Okay. Other questions?
Oh, just a comment. This is huge in that I think we're seeing a lot of traffic on some of the other roads, such as Rock Springs and some of the other ancillary roads, in an effort to avoid Sam Ridley. And with this, this will make Sam Ridley the preferred route, and I think will help improve our other roadways in and around that, so this is, this is huge.
Well, it's also one more step toward getting the Rocky IV interchange. I mean, we iterate about that one more time, you know, they insist that we must make the other roads more passable before Sam Ridley Park, I mean, excuse me, before Rocky IV Road is awarded to us as a interchange. So, another step.
We did see in planning Thursday night, the corner there that was talking about the improvements there at Old Nashville Highway and Sam Ridley on the opposite side, on the Walgreens side, being kinda proposed for an approval of a corner lot there. So, if I'm not mistaken, was that seven lanes? Didn't it mirror the Stonecrest?
I believe it is seven lanes.
Yeah. It was two lefts, two straights.
Are you talking about the Sam, the Stonecrest intersection?
No, the Walgreens, Old Nashville Highway, Walgreens.
Yeah, that was seven approaches.
Yeah. Seven lanes, and that's, I mean, that's so needed right there, too.
Right.
So, there's a lot coming.
Well, and I think one of the things that we've tried to talk to citizens about, this doesn't happen overnight. It takes a lot of meetings, it takes a lot of us talking to TDOT and trying to get help, and I think we're starting to see the fruits of that labor pay off. So we appreciate all of the help from TDOT and from MPO on these projects.
And Tom chasing those grants for us, too, right?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Okay. So, any other questions or comments on this item? Then do I have a motion for, to approve?
So move.
I have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now move on to item E, that was under the consent agenda, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a proposal from Gresham Smith &amp; Partners relative to the Potomac Place Extension Project. Tom?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is Potomac Place Extension, what we're looking at doing is taking the traffic light that's currently at Cheney and moving it down to Potomac Place, extending it north to where it intersects with Cheney. What that allows to do is provide a little more space between the light at Potomac Place and the light at Stonecrest, to allow cars to travel through there a little bit easier. What, if you've ever been through that intersection, especially at rush hour, once the light is, there's not enough room between the light at Stonecrest and existing Cheney for cars to stack up, so they end up stacking up through that intersection, it creates a bottleneck situation there. People can't turn or move through that intersection. By moving this light down, that will create the room we need, the amount of asphalt we need to be able to stack cars through there without backing up through the intersection and through the traffic light.
And this has always been a part of the project, we're just moving it from the TDOT portion to a town, a town-
Right.
-project now.
Any progress on tying Genie Lane into this road here?
Uh, you know, that's a project that, I know we've been back and forth a lot with some of the landowners in between, this section of existing Genie, and where Potomac Place is gonna be coming through in the future, just to find the best location for that roadway to go through, and we're still evaluating that. It is a high priority, because it would be great to have that parallel road, the same way President's Place parallels on the opposite side of Sam Ridley, to help people travel back and forth between commercial areas, so that is a project that is a priority to us. I think it's a timing issue at this point on when development may occur versus when we would do that project.
Yeah, let me follow up on that. We, you know, the challenge is getting it across Wolverine, and, you know, you got two essential options. One, you could route the road in front of Academy Sports and perhaps even cut into their retention pond and require it be moved elsewhere. You could tee the road, you could make a right and make a left in between the apartments and the-
Offices there.
Yeah. But there's only like, what, 46 feet, and be a squeeze to get two lanes through there. And the other one is to, I guess, purchase Dr. Rudd's buildings and knock them down and run it that way. So, given all our other projects that we had in the hopper, it was just something, we just, it would be a financial challenge for us to pursue that. Now, we have met with Steve Steele and talked to him about the church, and there were issues there, too, so I think that's a, that's a good challenge for the new town manager to pursue.
Brian and I did meet with the people that are looking at developing the River of Life.
Right.
River of Life, and let them know that it was a priority that, that there be access left for that road, so.
Very good.
Um, any other questions for Tom on this? Then do I have a motion?
I'm move to approve.
A motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now move-
Thank you, Tom.
What?
I said, thank you, Tom.
Oh. Old business. We'll now move on to our only public hearing tonight, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the amendment of the previously approved PRD for property located on Tax Map 33, partial 58.01, containing approximately 33.44 acres. It's requested by Green Tree LLC. The property's located south of Ryan Hill Drive and east of Hendricks Hill Drive. It's adjacent to the Green Tree, Mountain Brook, and Summer Ridge subdivisions, and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor, Council, this is an existing approved PRD that has been requested to be changed and amended, so it's the same process as rezoning the property to a different zone. So, a land use plan would support a single-family residential development, five to nine units per acre in this area, which is a medium, I know our land is planning a medium density. Surrounding zone is a mix of R1, R3, and the Woodmont PRD. The previously approved PRD was for up to 130 lots, with various requirements on that. The requested amendment would reduce that number of lots to actually down to 11 lots. And for Ryan Hill Drive, stubbed into the road, property right now would be extended into the development. into the development as a private road. It would provide access to eight of those 11 lots, and then there would be Skinner Drive on the southwest corner that would be extended as a public road and would provide access to three lots. We did talk with the developer, and they're well aware of some concerns we had. There's some pretty steep topography on this property, which is why they have looked at just reducing the number of lots so much. The developer's representative did agree to address the concerns we have regarding the slopes of some of the driveways, primarily on those eight lots that would be coming off the private road on the north side, and the ability to, for the fire department to respond to those homes. And so we were, we will be addressing that kind of on a case-by-case basis as the, as Platts come in and the, and the individual lots are developed, so, but we will have to address those things then, and they will be required to. The Planning Commission did review this and did recommend approval unanimously.
Questions for Kevin on this, or comments?
Kevin, the two R1s that are adjacent to it right there, have any indications of what they might do with those pit parcels?
I have not talked to any, either one of those property owners. I have no idea what their timing is. The one-on-one directly to the east does have access through the other end of Skinner Drive, so it could be developed individually like that, through that roadway. The other piece to the south is actually part of the Woodmont development, actually will stub into that, as well, so I think Green Tree as well. So it'll be, could be developed in the long term, but I have not talked to any, either property owner about any plans that they have.
But the peak elevation is on this parcel 5801, correct?
I believe that's correct, yes.
Other questions for Kevin before we move to the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, then we will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we will close this public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
I'm moved to approve.
A motion to approve, do we have a second?
A second.
Motion in a second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion passes. We'll now move on to new business. Our first item of business under the Planning Commission report is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 49, parcel 107.00, containing approximately 4.6 acres. It's requested by Jimmy Maynard to go from R1 to C4. The property is located at 10259 Old Nashville Highway, and it is a first reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a piece of property, as you said, it's about 4.6 acres. It's kind of between Stewart Valley Drive and the school and the church there, and then the Lennox Development. This is kind of to the southeast. Land use plan would support a medium-density, single-family residential development in this area. Surrounding zoning is kind of a mixture. There's R1 across the street, there's also C2 across the street, and then there's adjoining C4, as well as the Lennox PUD. There is an existing house and some detached accessory buildings on the property as it is today. The Planning Commission did review this and did recommend approval unanimously.
Questions for Kevin on this?
They indicated what type of development they're going to put on there, Kevin?
At this time, I think the owner is just looking to achieve a zoning that he could then market, and then how he could, you know, potential buyers, he could give them the list of uses that are allowed in C4. He does not, he's not intending to develop it himself.
Actually, one of the things we looked at in planning the other night on this was the parcel right next to it is C4, and this does front Old Nashville Highway, which is sort of a business type of road. So if and when that develops out, C4 is about the easiest commercial district we could ask for there, so, and at that point, you know, we'll look at site plans and things like that when it develops, as far as creating buffers to the neighbors and things like that. But Mr. Maynard, when he came in the other night, actually, we had him get up and talk about this, he didn't have any speculation as to what that would be, but the fact that it was C4 with C2 across the street, C4 bordering it right there, we felt like it was a good fit.
I don't see a problem with it, really. I mean, you know, it's just being adjacent to Lennox, and, you know, sometimes some of the Lennox things have mixed use.
Right.
Anyway.
It used to be zoned that way, if you recall.
Well, that's what I was thinking.
Other questions? Then do I have a motion?
Motion that we approve.
A motion, do we have a second? Second. Motion in a second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Our next item under the Planning Commission report is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 28, parcels, parcel 103.01, containing approximately 43.3 acres. It's requested by Richard Toon to go from R1 to R3. The property is located at the end of Williamsport Drive, and this is a first reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a piece of property that you all have seen before from a different applicant to a buyer, and this is the actual owners of the property that have requested it this time. This property is located at the end of Williamsport Drive, there's also three additional roads stubbed into it, which is the other end of Williamsport Drive, as well as Bonifay Drive and High Ridge Drive. The land use plan would support medium-density residential development in this area, so this request is consistent with the land use plan. Surrounding zoning is all R3. It's actually developed on three sides and part of the fourth as R3, and so this would be the same zoning. Planning Commission did review this and did recommend approval unanimously.
Questions for Kevin on this?
Kevin, for clarity, what is allowed in an R3?
It's a single-family zone, 10,000 square feet, minimum lot size, so...
And to reiterate, this is exactly the same as what's there and what surrounds this piece of property.
Correct.
Did you have any citizens come to that meeting? Because I know that that was part of the issue the last time.
It was, it was, before, we have not at this time. I haven't heard calls or anything from anyone yet. I'm kind of surprised, but we haven't yet, so.
And Tim and Raquel, you may have watched the meeting, I don't know, you probably...
I couldn't watch it this week, it was actually not online, so I didn't get a chance to watch. That's why I'm asking now, because I usually do.
Well, just, just to tag along with what you guys are asking questions about, we made it perfectly understandable to those that were in the audience and maybe watching Thursday night, because last time, this same request was made, we were hearing from people in the local area there that said they're putting apartments and townhomes there. That is not the case, this is not the zoning. This zoning is exactly, exactly what they have currently where they live, if they border this property. And one of the things about the owner at this time is requesting it, and I always like to remind people that if they owned it, they have the right to do what they kind of want to with it. This is the best zoning possible that you could probably want to see if you live around it, because it's identical to what you have. There's no density, there's no apartments, there's no townhomes. So we just want to make sure everybody understands that before that rumor hits the neighborhood or whatever, if it does, because last time it did, and we had to dispel that quite a bit. It's the same exact thing as you currently live in, if you live around it, so. Just kind of want to make that clear for people who may be watching or that live nearby.
Any other questions? Then do I have a motion?
I'm moved to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Our next item has been pulled from the agenda, is that correct, Kevin?
That is correct.
Okay, then we will move on to item B, which is the Package Liquor Board Report, and there were no applications for the town council to consider at this time. So we will move on to item C, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the increase in the annual salary of the town of Smyrna Municipal Court Clerk, and this is a first reading. I don't see Jeff Craig here, or can you take it?
Yes, as council's aware, a salary study was performed by Jeff Craig with Human Resources for the municipal court clerk's position that yielded, that the salary should be increased to $75,000 annually. And because it is an elected position, that these positions are, their salary is approved by ordinance, and it takes effect after, or at the beginning of the new office period. Sorry, couldn't get that out for some reason.
Any questions for Jeff?
I don't know.
Okay, we did discuss this at length at the retreat, and then discussed it again at the workshop, so if there's nothing else, then do I have a motion to approve?
I'm moved we approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Item D is consideration of a resolution approving funding from the nonprofit organization for the fiscal year 2018, 2019. Rex, how are you?
Good, Mayor, how are you?
I am great tonight.
This is something we do each year, a resolution stating the agency, the purpose and the amount must be approved before any funds can be distributed to nonprofit agencies. And this is a rule that established by the Comptroller of the Treasury of the State of Tennessee.
Okay, this is our annual housekeeping item for nonprofits. Any questions about it? You have the figures in front of you, do I have a motion to approve?
Some move.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Item E is consideration of a resolution to reimburse expenses for a future debt issue. Rex?
Yes, ma'am, this is another item that we do each year. In the 2019 fiscal year budget, we planned for financing several capital projects with bonded debt. I have included a list, plus the Potomac Place Extension Project, and we will probably have expenditures before these, we're able to issue the debt, and this will allow us to legally reimburse ourselves for those expenditures once we get the bond proceeds.
Okay, but it's a not to exceed $10 million, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. Questions for Rex on this? Then do I have a motion?
I'm moved we approve.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Item F is authorization to proceed with engineering design and right-of-way acquisition for the Olive Branch Sewer Extension Project. Mike, how are you?
Doing well, how are you?
Great.
We made two separate presentations on this, we've had multiple meetings with some of the players that would be impacted by the Olive Branch Sewer. It is our hope that we would be, receive authorization to proceed with the engineering and right-of-way cost for the project. If you approve that, probably within seven, eight, nine months, we'll come back with some pricing with respect to what it'll cost to run the sewer out there, and you'll get another crack at whether you want to do it or not. You know, we anticipate probably $6 million. We've also discussed quite thoroughly the revenue that it would eventually generate for the town at a time when we could use that revenue to put towards the expansion of the wastewater treatment plant. And we also have been good stewards of the enterprise money, so we can pay cash for the project, so I'll say it once again, we all feel strongly that it's a, it's a good move for the city.
You did mention that I want to make sure the money that you're asking to move forward with is budgeted funds. It was in the budget, these, the funds that we're talking about using for this design phase was budgeted dollars.
Yes.
Then do I have a motion to approve?
I'm moved we approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion? This will come back to us once we get the figures together, so that we can look at it again, so.
Well, I think we recognize this is a growth area, and I think this gets us out in front, and then we have the decision-making ability at that point. Also, Steve, you know, highlighted that we have budgeted to, to go ahead and go for it with this design.
Well, I feel more comfortable about it, I mean, because we are looking at the roads and such as that out there, because that's an integral part, is being able to get the people in and get them out of there. And, you know, so much of it just branches off of this very beginning of it, if you will.
We really already had interested people, you know, for development purposes out there, and as Mike alluded to last time, our wastewater treatment can receive money back for this, and it kind of goes back in our coffers to do more expansion work with, so doing the study now, I think if it's budgeted now, it's smart, we need to probably go ahead and do that.
Well, and I also think that questions, other questions that we have that go along with the project, we need to get this information so we can answer some of, some of the other questions that we have, so. Okay, so we have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Our next item is a consideration of a taxicab franchise for Mr. Larry Odom, and this is a public hearing, and this is not something that we do very often, so Chief, are you gonna, do you want to come kind of kick it off?
Yes, ma'am, as per the ordinance, Mr. Larry Odom made an application for a taxicab franchise. He is only the second one that I have done in 11 years, but I approved Mr. Odom's franchise, or not approved it, but basically agreed with it, and he has met all the requirements for the ordinance to, to get the franchise.
Great. Is Mr. Odom here?
He is.
He is?
Yes, Colonel.
Great. Would you mind coming forward? Before we move to our public hearing, we just have not had this very often, so tell us a little bit about your business.
Okay, well, I started about, in September of 2016, driving part-time for Uber and Lyft, and I moved into the black car end of the service, and so that's what this, this service would be.
Great.
Yes.
Questions for Mr. Odom?
I saw Mr. Odom sitting over there, and it's been so long since I've seen him, I didn't recognize him, I apologize for not recognizing him.
He probably didn't recognize you either.
That's true. I'd say probably, I don't know, my hair fell out 30 years ago.
Well, we always appreciate new businesses getting started in town, so thank you for coming forward tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now move to our public hearing, is there anyone here to speak for or against this item? Seeing no one, we will close this public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
Motion that we approve.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. We now have an appointment of one member to the Arts Commission Board to serve an unexpired term ending in 2020, and we have had one application is all that I had, is there more than that? That's what I've had. Is it Lori Heselman? Yes, yes. So Lori Heselman was our only one, was that, or was there another one that I didn't know?
I thought it was a second one, but that is the one that we are nominating, so.
Okay, let me look and make sure, I didn't have that, but that doesn't matter. Let's make sure. I only had the one. Jeff, did you know of another one other than Lori?
I've not been advised.
Okay, that's the only one that I was given, so only having one applicant and only having one position to fill, all in favor of Lori Heselman serving on the Arts Commission, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Lori, congratulations, I think she is traveling as we speak, so I'm sure when she gets back in town, she will learn that she's on the Arts Commission, so congratulations. We, item I is appointment of one town council representative to the Charity Assistance Fund Board to serve an unexpired term ending in 2019. I'm going to ask that we defer this. Tiffany did check with Beth today and said that there won't be anything to actually vote on, I think until October or November, is that correct, Rex? And so Lori was our councilperson that filled that position before, so based on if we fill the council position tonight that we have open, I'd like for us to come back and readdress that at another meeting to decide who we want to serve on that committee, if that's okay with you all. Okay? Okay, so we will defer that probably, let's see, 60 days, let's defer it to not next workshop, but the next one, so that'd be the...
September.
No, be the August workshop, right?
August workshop.
August workshop for the September meeting. Okay. Item J is consideration of an appointment to the council, of council member to fill the vacancy. As you all know, Lori surprised us and resigned in, was it the end of May? I think end of May. And we had discussion about what we wanted to do, whether we were going to leave the seat vacant till the November election, or whether we wanted to fill the seat. And we opted to look at filling the seat. We asked individuals who were interested to submit application through the town website, and we had 10 individuals that applied. I do want to read the names of the individuals and a little something about each one so you know. First is Douglas Brown, who is an event volunteer, he's in the Rotary Club of Smyrna and does things through the local church. And then we have Catherine Cruz Penrose, who is on the Smyrna Stormwater Board and the Laverne Smyrna Girl Scouts volunteer, and also volunteers at her local church, past volunteer troop leader of Smyrna Girl Scouts. Then we have Benjamin Franklin, who is a current board member on the Smyrna Stormwater Board, a diplomat with Rutherford County Chamber of Commerce, alumni member of the Smyrna Police Academy, past board member of the Smyrna Beer Board, alumni member of the Rutherford County Sheriff's Citizens Academy. Then we have Robert New, who was president of the Smyrna ABC League, involved in local, county, and state politics for many years. Amanda Newbern, current governor-appointed Chair of the Tennessee Board of Occupational Therapy, scholarship co-chair, Tennessee Occupational Therapy Association, and in the past eight years, service of the United States Army Reserve, secretary at Stewart's Creek High School Marching Band Boosters, and a mentor for the Tennessee Promise Program. Then we have Abhi Patra, who is a current board member of the Smyrna Stormwater Board, treasurer of the Cultural Association for the Bengali Association of Greater Nashville, a board member of Gertner HOA Associates for Multiple Condos and Townhomes in Rutherford County, and the, and past IEE fellow and engineering and research chair, private investment and equity group at University of Chicago. We then have Carlos Rawls, who is a commissioner for Smyrna Baseball League, a board member on the Smyrna Parks Advisory Board, a member of the Smyrna Athletics Committee and the American Legion, also firefighter and a baseball coach. Ryan Sanford is currently a pastor of a local church and participates in various community events throughout the year, inside and outside of church. Jerry Short is a current board member on our Smyrna Planning Commission, a member of CSP Board of Certified Safety Professionals, member of the American Society of Safety Engineers, a member of the J.C.'s, past board member of the Smyrna Planning Commission under Mayor Mullins, assistant coach of Smyrna Youth Basketball, and a mentor at Smyrna High School Basketball. Miranda Swift is a board member on the Smyrna Beer Board, a volunteer with Vanderbilt Athletics, volunteer at MTSU Contest of Champions, volunteer instructor at Band Camp, volunteer at Bridgestone Arena Concessions, catering volunteer at Gilderadner Nashville, and volunteer annual sponsor of the YMCA, the American Red Cross, and cleanup volunteer and member of the Comprehensive Planning Steering Committee. So those are our 10 applicants. One of the things that I think is really important for someone that's going to be serving in this position is that they're involved in the community. And I think the one thing we can say about all 10 of these applicants is they're all involved in the community, and I think that's important. I also think it's important that an individual who's going to sit on this council has gotten their start through the boards and committees through the town of Smyrna. That's one of the things, anybody that comes to talk to me that wants to get involved in politics, in Smyrna politics specifically, I say get your feet wet serving on a board. And a lot of these have done that. So questions or comments? We'll do this just like we've done every other board or committee that we appoint a position, I will open the floor for nominations, and then we will vote on those individuals once we take nominations. Questions or comments?
So as one of the newest council members now, two years, one of the largest learning gaps that I personally experienced coming to the council was surrounding planning, zoning, and the work that Mark and Tim put in every month in the Planning Commission. I've been on the Board of Zoning Appeals for several years, and without that knowledge, the ability to be able to come in here every month and follow along with some of the zoning requests and the public hearings that we hear would have been very difficult. So that reason I say that is I think that is a huge benefit for anyone joining or considering to join the council in any aspect. And when we look at this list, the one name that pops out is obviously the one member that is already on our Smyrna Planning Commission. And he's been on there for several years, even under a previous mayor. So I think the knowledge and the understanding of town zoning and town planning that that experience brings is going to be hard to match. None of the, there's lots of folks on here that are very qualified in other areas, but that is the one area that I believe Jerry Short stands out in.
Other questions or comments before I open the floor for nominations?
I'll add to that, I serve on planning currently with Jerry, and I echo what Steve just shared. It's a lot of years spent in the past working on Board of Zoning Appeals, just like you did, and several of the town boards and committees, IDB, the Arts Commission before Raquel's time, and especially Planning Commission. I had a lot of years, and still do, with the Planning Commission, I'm currently your appointee on the body, and thank you. And so as I looked at this list, I did see some people that certainly have qualifications that in time with the right grooming and training, they probably would be able to grasp a little bit more about what we do. But Jerry just has that mindset now, and he has that knowledge now. I've known Jerry a long time, and so I can speak to him as a person, I can speak to him from a position of character, and I think that's a good thing to know about somebody. So I agree with, I agree with Steve.
Anything else before I open the floor? Then I will open the floor for nominations.
I will nominate Jerry Short.
Are there any other nominations? Then I will close the floor to nominations, and only having one nomination and one position to fill, all in favor of Jerry Short to fill our town council position, say aye? Any opposed? Jerry Short is our new council member. Jeff, can you talk us through process over the next couple of days and then over the next month or so?
Yes, pretty much immediately, we'll obviously contact Mr. Short and get an affidavit of year residency to show that he has been a resident for a year, so he's qualified, just as anyone turning in papers would be. Also, do a criminal history for moral perpetuity, since he is an appointed member for that. Then after that, we'll be ready to set for swearing in at the workshop this month, and he will be good to go after then.
Okay. Swearing in at the workshop, Ms. Diane, I'm assuming 4:45? It's about 15 minutes, all we usually, isn't that all we usually take? So if everything goes okay with all of, we're, once everything's checked out, then we will do swearing in at 4:45 on, before the workshop on?
The 26th, I think.
The 26th?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't look, is Jerry in the audience?
Yes.
Oh, there he is, Jerry, you want to come forward? We're going to test out your speaking skills.
I think I'd rather have the Boy Scouts do it.
Well, congratulations, we're excited to be working with you. It is a huge responsibility, but one that I know that you will take seriously and one that you will do a wonderful job at. So anything you'd like to add?
Well, I appreciate it, it's an honor to serve the community that grew up in and love, so I'm certainly looking forward to it. So thank you for your support.
Great. Any questions or comments?
No, I just want to say it was kind of refreshing, went back there right after we voted, I looked back at Jerry's face and he was smiling, so it's kind of refreshing.
Smiles are not always what we see on our faces after we vote, is it?
I'm not sure, maybe he doesn't know what he's getting into, I'm not sure.
Could be, could be. Well, we look forward to it, and swearing in will be at 4:45 before, and so invite friends and family, and Jeff will get with you probably tonight or tomorrow about things that we need to move forward. Thanks, Jerry. Okay, we do have one item under other, it's Mr. Moss, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a performance agreement with the O'Donnells relative to the 2018 Barbecue Fest. Mike, how are you?
Yes, ma'am, I'm doing fine, thank you, Mayor Council, appreciate y'all letting us put this under other. The Barbecue Fest is scheduled for Saturday, August 18th, in the Depot District, and we're just asking for the O'Donnells to get a performance agreement approved and play again. They will bring a full band this year, they've been playing just two or three people, and they do a great job like that, but we ask them to do a full band this year as that event gets bigger, we'd like to have more sound. And we get several requests for those guys to come back, so we'd like to present that to the council.
Questions for Mike about this? Did you talk to Jerry about the part in the agreement that has him singing a solo as the new council member?
I'd let the mayor take care of it.
Oh, good, good.
Hey, Jerry, guess what?
Questions about any of this contract? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Status reports, anything, Mr. Gill?
Staff does a great job each and every week, and I'm proud of you guys, another good job.
Would agree with that. Jeff, anything? Ms. Diane?
Nothing.
Mr. Hercules, come forward, we've not gotten to hear from you. So let's see, Mr. Hercules has been on the job, what is today, the 7th?
He thinks it's been a long time.
It's been 18 weeks.
The 10th, I've forgotten a few days, and you had one day off for the 4th. You're welcome. So how have things been going?
Everything's going well, I just, you know, I'd echo what Harry said as far as the staff. It's just been a great experience working with every member of the staff through staff meetings and individual meetings. I am working towards taking advantage of while Mr. Gill's here, to spend some time in the field and get to know the departments next, well, this Thursday, and Chief Arnold will spend the day together. He told me he had an agenda that should keep me entertained, I'm not sure what that means, but I've already made appointments to spend some time with Parks and Rec, the Fire Department, and also with the utilities. And my goal will be to be in each of the departments between now and the time that Mr. Gill will be exiting at the end of August. So I appreciate the opportunity, I appreciate the council's confidence in me, I appreciate Mr. Gill's confidence in me, and he has been a great team player so far, keep that up, okay? Making me feel welcome and including me in things, and Jeff Peach, I've worked very closely with Jeff as a town attorney, I told him his number one job is to keep me out of trouble, so.
It's his number one job for all of us, all of us.
But again, I do appreciate, thank you.
Questions or comments for Brian?
Just the entertaining part with the chief, the hazing that takes place for you is actually getting tased and seeing how you handle it, so.
And pepper spray.
I do remember a few years ago going into a...
K-9 training, and all that.
An opportunity where I had to go into a gas building and take the mask off and recite my name and some numbers that I couldn't remember about halfway through, so I'm hoping we don't have a gas chamber anywhere in the town of Smyrna.
Okay, thanks, Brian. Raquel?
I'm good, unless I'm missing any holidays here that y'all are going to tell me about later after we pass me.
How was your birthday?
It was fine.
Uneventful?
Very uneventful.
At this age, that's kind of nice now, I would, for me it is anyway, so.
Thanks for asking.
You're welcome.
Thanks for the text.
You're welcome. HG?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Tim?
Have we spoken about 4th of July since last?
It was on my list.
I'm just going to say it was a great event, thanks to all the departments for it. Man, talk about a community event, it was far and away incredible.
Agreed, agreed. Steve?
Not much, we have, I was going to mention 4th of July, it was, it was an excellent event. Just coming off of my son being home for 10 days, so got to spend 10 days with him, which was awesome. Dropped him off at the airport this morning, so he is full-fledged Marine Combat Training right now, maybe not having as much fun as we are. Friday, early voting starts for quite a few positions, and one of my dear friends is running, Tim Morrell's running for the State Senate position, so early voting, I'm sorry.
I thought you changed something.
The House position, sorry, I don't know what I was thinking. But he's running this, the early voting starts this Friday and runs through April, I mean, August 2nd, I'm really struggling with dates and numbers and stuff. Also, I've gotten quite a few emails, phone calls, and conversations regarding the recent library changes to hours. I'm not really ready to release all the details yet, but I did want to let the public know that we have met with some representatives of the Smyrna Library, and we are very close to a resolution that will restore those hours. So I've got to still brief the rest of the council, bring everyone up to speed on what the plan is, but I just wanted to let the public know that the phone calls have not gone unanswered, and they have definitely been heard, and we are, we are very close to resolving that issue.
And to follow up on that, the library has been a priority for this council from day one, and I don't want anybody to think it wasn't a priority, there were just some questions we had about some budgetary items that we needed to get answered, and we feel like that we're moving towards that.
Yeah, that's right.
Have we received any of that, by the way, yet?
We have not received that yet.
I knew that was like August or so.
Steve has his first meeting, Steve is going to be one of our representatives, one of our representatives, which we thought was very important, to have a council member sit on that board, and so Monday is his day.
And that's one of the things we were actually waiting for.
Absolutely.
You know, so.
Absolutely. Thanks, Steve.
Is that all, Steve?
Mark?
Thank you, Brayden, for doing the pledge for us tonight, and Benjamin for bringing him, and for what you guys do in the Boy Scout community, we know that's an awesome thing for young people, and working your way up to be an Eagle Scout, it's an amazing thing, so keep working hard, my friend, and thank you for representing us well tonight with the pledge. I had, I was going to mention Tim as well. Tim is a dear friend of mine as well, I've known Tim since I was 13, he threatened to beat me up and take my tree fort, and that's a story we laugh about today, but Tim's a quality guy, and I just want to wish him well as early voting starts with his campaign for the 49th district. Jerry, congratulations, I'm looking forward to working with you, sir, and having you aboard, and I know you bring a lot of wisdom and a lot of history from our town here, and that was a quality that I found to be very attractive, having grown up here and knowing the background of Smyrna, and knowing you personally, I know who you are, so I'm looking forward to working with you. Last thing I guess I want to mention, I had an event on Saturday morning that took place in my family. I have a new, not quite nine-pound grandson that was born. Noah Alexander Adkins was born healthy with all 10 fingers and toes, and Mom and Dad, Adam and Lisa, are doing good, so I wanted to congratulate them, and we're excited. Grandbaby number four, I'm one short of a ball team, so.
Congratulations, I was also going to mention that as well, so I know you and Connie are so excited. Couple of things to announce, Farmers Market every Saturday through September 15th from 8:00 to 12:00. If you have not been down to Front Street, we encourage you to make your way down for the Smyrna Farmers Market, lots of entertainment and good stuff going on. Also upcoming event, Smyrna Parks 5K Challenge in the Monty Mile, it will be Saturday, August the 4th, from 7:30 to 12:00 at Sharp Springs Park. There are three convenient ways to register, in person at the Parks Office, Monday through There are three convenient ways to register, in person at the Parks Office, Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 4:30, at Smyrna Academy Sports and Outdoors, July 28, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00, or online through the Town of Smyrna website. Entry fee is $30. One fee for both races, $35 on race day. The 5K begins at 7:30. The one-mile run begins at 8:30, and you can contact Marty Smith at our Parks Department for more information. Also, we still have pavers available to purchase for the Captain Jeff Kous Memorial. The pavers can be purchased via mobile calls or through Town Hall. You can contact Amber Hobbs or Tiffany Lawson for details. We do have a few shirts left for the Captain Kous Memorial. They can be purchased here at Town Hall or at the SOAC Center for $15, in size 2X and 3X, or $20. Magnets are five, and decals are three. I also wanted to thank all of the departments who helped to put on the Independence Day celebration. I have to tell you, it was more people than I have ever seen.
Had to be the biggest.
It had to be. I mean, I looked out at the cloverleaf at Sam Ridley, and it looked like the infield of Daytona. I mean, there were people everywhere, so...
I hope they acted better.
Of course they did. They're from Smyrna.
So you've been to the infield of Daytona?
No, I've only watched from afar, watched from afar. But, you know, for us to enjoy that night, there's a lot of employees that are there working so we can have a good time. So thank you to everybody who made the Independence Day celebration possible, and I'll tell you, it was something spectacular to see from the plaza at the Jeff Kous Memorial. I mean, I don't think there could have been anything better, and so I think it was a great time had by all. We've already started needing to talk about how to make it bigger and better for next year, and we're really excited. So I want to thank both of the guys who were here tonight. You both did a great job. You got up and spoke, and wonderful. Also want to congratulate all of the recipients for the Art Crawl, and hope you will participate again next year, and if you didn't get an opportunity to participate this year, there will be a chance next year. So anything else to come before council? I don't care who you get out to vote for, just go out and vote, vote, vote. People like Steve and Kevin have fought for us to have the right to vote, so make sure that, that you're going to do that. So thank you, and if nothing else, we are adjourned.